Yeah.
Give me one sec, I'm just gonna pull up a few things over here. How's everyone doing?
Good, how are you?
And I'm like, three and a half miles, and it just killed me. Like, I feel like so bent and sleepy. It just took everything. And my kids still get so bad when I had COVID in October that I'm being like an old woman, and I don't know what to do.
Yeah.
Oh, that's, that's rough. And it's like a rare enough, like, it's common enough that they know it exists, but it's rare enough that no one knows why it exists.
Yeah.
So I didn't know. So that's a known thing to be stuff?
Yes.
Because it's all inflammation.
That was the first thing that hit me, and I didn't even realize it was that. I thought I pulled out my bath more. Like, it was, I was like, oh my, what did I do? When do I lay flat, like I usually do? And then someone told me that it's a symptom.
That was me, I told you. We were on the phone. You're like, that's what that was.
The plan is to start here. So I think Elaine and Sarah, if you guys wanna kind of talk about possibly moving, or do we want to just review this first, have some conversations, or do we want to kind of break off into a discussion about RM?
So I think, let's start with the idea of RM.
So here, I'll pull that up.
We started out believing that we didn't have a code that could accommodate what was desired on Casanova Road. But upon reflection and input from the planning board, it would appear that RM may be able to accommodate it, which would save us having to make up a new zone. And we, I think we still want a multiple use zone, but it can be done in the context of a comprehensive plan and we have more variables considered than we would do in the short term. So the question is, RM has a few limitations that are not really appropriate to this lot. But the planning and zoning board between them to waive or consider or provide a zoning relief from those things.
What they said.
Without having to change the zone.
What they said in the planning board was that because it's an existing structure, some of the instructions of RM wouldn't apply. Because I can't remember, they said which area of our zone mentions this, but but it, but it's, but that's why that this proposal couldn't work for RM, because they're just modifying existing buildings.
And some of the things in site plan, things like the block coverage and the setback requirements, the planning board always has the ability to say, well, that was our guideline, but we can.
They would, yeah, because the ZB could give them setback areas and things like that.
So that kind of thing. So that might make it cumbersome for the applicant to, like, get site plan sort of philosophical agreement and then have to go to zoning boards, I need three feet on this building and eight feet on that building. But as long as they just had that list and the zoning board agreed to it, they could do it.
Which lengthening the process might be a good thing right now. If someone else sees this and says, oh, I would do a mixed-use development, going through that process and understanding how it differs from the current zones and what variances we need, would actually give us a lot better information for when we go and make.
We would learn what we need to change. Or what we would need to update.
So right up the top, what, I think it was like parking might be something that needs to be changed and something else?
For RM, there, it's just the parking, one of the, the, right now, it says that apartments should have,
two spaces per person or something.
Two, yeah, two spaces per bedroom.
Per bedroom. As opposed to per unit. So that's probably actually just a mistake, but we should correct it.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, that, because the parking is like creating, I mean, throughout municipalities around the country, these parking requirements, it's, like, I complained to Core, and they're like, we only have them because you make it.
Yeah, we need to look at, and I've been trying to do a lot of research on, like, it almost, right now, we do minimum parking, but almost it potentially could be a maximum. But then I haven't found the research on, like, exactly what is standard or what is best practices yet, but I'm looking into that.
I do have, when Heather and I met with the planning board, that was one of the things that they talked about, is they have, so they take the code that says you have to have X spaces, and they permit a percentage to not be built as long as you have the land that you could if it turned out to be a problem later. So they call it banked parking. So they let you keep the field or the woods or whatever. And I think we might, on the site that we're talking about, that A1 law could be that, that if they need, if they need to say in order to comply with the law that there's room for more cars, but they don't have to build anything, they just leave that lot vacant. Because my concern that this is if the offices on the ground floor are busy and people are home, that we might discover that there are, there are parking issues with the range.
It's not too many apartments, though.
It's not, I mean, I don't think so. I don't think it's likely, but having gone to some of the doctors that are in there, sometimes blood's full.
Yeah.
So it would be something to consider that over time, they might discover that they need more spaces, but they have land. So I don't think we want to make it now, but if they needed it, they would have the ability to make it like a guest lot or something.
Interesting. So that's, I would imagine, something in the future for the, you know, the comprehensive planning learning changes. We probably are gonna have to figure out how to do that without, because the idea would be, if you're developing some mixed-use property, that that extra land would be a green space that people could use, you'd have seating there and stuff like that. So we should, we should have a little bit more of a deep dive into that. But I also think, too, there may be some need to have separate rules for reused space versus new space. Because for reused space to be used, it's generally gonna come with a certain amount of parking.
And that's all you get.
Yeah, and then, you know, if we have, like, green space requirements, we'd basically be telling them, okay, rip up some parking spots and then make it green space, which could be really cumbersome. Whereas new builds or major modifications could say, you know, you, we do require this amount of green space, and these are the setbacks that we actually want you to build to, rather than.
I also think there's probably, what you, what you said, some studies around, like, if you, if you go to Core Town Center on, you know, the weekend before Christmas, they still have an entire empty lot. You know, there's, there's, there's such a thing as excess parking. And it, and that's where you should be able to say, like, we, this is, this percentage is just more than what anybody could possibly need in their wildest dreams. And then you go down to maybe another area where every Saturday, you have to drive around the block three times, you know? So you could kind of, there's probably people who have studied that and can tell you exactly where that line is.
Yeah.
I do, I mean, I, I understand that we don't want to make things too cumbersome, and I think that we should favor that. But I, I know that in Syracuse, when they re, they just, like, overhauled all their zoning, and it was several years-long study, and what they decided to do was any updates to a building, you had to bring it up to the new code. So they weren't gonna make people who just own buildings change everything. But if you were gonna, if you were going to change a certain, I know, I don't know what the criteria was or the threshold, but they would have had to tear up parking lot, they would have had to make it forward-facing, like, facing the sidewalk, like, you couldn't, if you were going to be making changes ahead of time, up to that standard. And if that's what we say that we want, we want it for a reason. I think we should make that uniform. I don't think that there should be exceptions. It will make it more expensive, but if our community is ever gonna be the way we want it to be, we have to change what's there, too. Not just make it be that way for anything brand brand new.
Yeah.
Well, I think incentivizing things versus, you know, we can do that by saying, like, you get a, you know, rather than, because I don't think we want to dissuade people from, for, for instance, if they are gonna be building four-hole housing on top of an existing thing, we don't want them to say, well, we were gonna do blah, blah, blah for the residents, but we can't afford to put in that, like, green space we wanted, because we gotta do this other thing. You know, I almost think, yeah. I think, I think it's a consideration. I think you want to do apple, apple and, or carrot and stick on that with folks to, to keep it moving forward. But, um, again, I think the education piece also about the, having in the comprehensive plan, here's what we want, because I'm thinking of excess parking and thinking about, if you already have a plan to say, yeah, wow, isn't it great that the Fayetteville Farmers Market is there? Wouldn't it be great if Core was given more than just a, you know, maybe they pay more for that, but pat on the back for that, and like, somehow incentivized or somehow for that?
Like, alternative uses for, like, we're, like, we're kind of saying, it's never really full, so they've actually found a really good use of it. That might be an interesting way of doing it, where, you know, we would expect this much parking, but we would encourage, if it's not actively used at all times, to find alternate uses, like, like, Caitlin, do you know how they do the, like, in-the-street stuff in Syracuse? When they're, when they did that, I think it was during COVID mostly?
Pop-up things.
Well, either pop-ups, but you could, like, just put seating in the road. Yeah.
They, they did do on.
Summer streets or whatever they call it.
Yeah, there were, there were, it was by law from the city council where they were temporarily suspending or creating something new that would expire on a certain date that allowed for those accessory uses of the properties. And it's been so well-received and, like, shutting down, like, Armory Square entirely. I'm sure our colleagues on the city council would be happy to share with us how they did those things, but the, this, not as so much a zoning question, like, we could do that very easily around.
We don't have a, I was more thinking, like, if we said you need to have this many spots, but, or, you know, you get a banked parking that's actually used for outdoor seating, and then has the option of becoming parking at some point if they really need it. But in the meantime.
Or pocket park with container veggie gardens or whatever, you know what I mean? Like, you know, we have, like, a whole bunch of.
From a, like, from the environmental perspective, though, getting rid of pavement is hugely important. Is it, like, with drainage, we have, we already know, we have a water issue in this town. And then with heat, like, the pavement's, like, reflecting heat and, like, putting it right back out there, having less, just less of this in, in general. And it's, it's expensive to remove, but if you're developing an entire real estate project, I don't think that that's the hill you're gonna die on. Like, they're tearing up pavement to build all this stuff. I don't think that this would, I don't think that this, unless I'm totally up against it, I can't imagine that this would prevent someone from moving forward for the construction.
I think the, the only factor in the parking, which I think is one of the issues for Town Center, is snow storage. So if, if the parking is perfect in the summer, you've lost X percent of spaces in the winter to piles of snow. So the, the, the farmer's market example is that, whatever that square footage is.
That's where.
Is spread out in snow during the winter.
Yeah, not all of it. And they've got that whole area down by the back, but.
Stickly. They're not wanting it core for parking, but I see Sarah's point, like, needs in the summer and change in the winter. We don't want to make the parking perfect. It's not bad to have extra parking. It's just bad to have way too much extra parking than you could ever dream of needing, because it looks terrible and it's bad for the environment and it's not good for, I mean, I'm, if you're at the YMCA and you want to get to Target, you don't walk.
Yeah.
And the reason why is because there's a sea of parking in between you and what you're trying to get to. It's just, we can fix that by changing zoning. And that's what I think we are all trying to achieve. I think that outside of Core, are there any other examples where we're concerned about parking requirements not suddenly becoming not sufficient, so that now there's not enough parking?
In the town versus the village, I can think of the village having that need to do more.
No, the villages mainly for sure has a parking issue, but that's, they don't have any.
I'm thinking of the.
Behind the walls, there's free municipal parking.
They don't have enough parking in the village manliness.
Well, you said your statement was that they don't have any municipal lots.
But that's not the, I, me and my neighbor's laying here, like, what I'm saying is, sort of, the, the issues where I'm agreeing with however we see that there's issues with parking, I think most notably the village of Manlius. But there is very, very few municipal.
One example, I think, it's off of 290, the Dollar General, the barber shop, there's a Dunkin' Donuts there. I think that's another case where there is a lot of parking there.
Yeah, it was terrible.
Isn't that the only neighborhood shopping?
Yeah.
And like, that's weird that there's so much parking.
But the issue there is the, the anchor store is still vacant. So if that store was busy, they would lose a lot more.
But I do think a lot of what we learned in the, the previous work session about, you know, how to move towards the type of environment that people are looking for nowadays, if those stores, if you swap the parking with the stores in that situation, I don't think the parking would be as much of an issue.
Right, and there should be, there's, it would be advantageous to have tree islands in that parking lot, things like that. So there's other ways where that part, but I think in general, that because there's still a vacant store, we really can suggest.
Yeah.
The parking. So what, like, if you go.
Alyssa, I know you've been trying to say something.
Yes, yeah. So to your statement regarding dying, then breaking the deal over parking, yes, and affordable housing, it very well could kill a deal with having to tear out a parking lot. It's very, very stringent terms, where there's, it's, every single penny counts in an affordable housing deal. And if they, if we're forcing them to tear out an extra parking lot just because we don't want it to be there, it very well could kill the deal, because they need every single penny to move forward with that, with that stuff. And then as far as having to make them have more additional parking spots, we could always also have them look at deals of leasing parking. So right as, as far as Seven Pines, there's a parking, there's a business right next door to it, for the parking lot. If they need additional parking spaces, maybe they could broker a deal with that business next door where they lease additional spaces.
Yeah, our organization works with the United Church of Fayetteville, and we need extra parking. And we have an actual agreement that we sign before events, and it's a, you know, so they're, the liability piece has kind of worked out.
Yes. Yeah, the, I don't think that there are many circumstance, like, I feel like now we've gone on a rabbit hole with this, like, what we've been talking about for 10 minutes. But I don't think that there are any spots that I can think of in our town where there is a sea of parking such that a, a affordable housing project couldn't, like, where are we, what are we even talking about? Like, we're debating, like, the theory of parking, like, we didn't think about the town of Manlius, we're thinking about a couple parcels. I don't think that this is a relevant conversation.
Well, I think it's something that should be considered, because we, I mean, also, we should be planning for the future. So who knows? What could happen to any lot that currently has a lot of parking? That might be, someone might be interested in redeveloping it or something. I think giving it, and maybe that's even it, is we say, you know, like, if, you know, for normal developments, we would expect, you know, the parking to be the right fit as opposed to just using whatever additional parking is there. And we would ask that some of it be reclaimed into green space. And I really like the idea of pushing for, like, the tree islands and stuff, or like, the little, even just the grass strips throughout, that'll break up a lot of that pavement. But I think in general, having a carve-out in whatever maybe the potential zone is, to say that for redevelopment purposes, if you're looking to put in X number of affordable units based on this definition of affordable, then we could say, the part, you know, ripping up the parking lot could be, you know, the, those requirements might be removed because of, there's another use that is attractive that's going in there that we wouldn't necessarily have to. I think being mindful of that, and also, too, who knows, maybe in 20 years, something does get redeveloped, and, you know, we need to make sure that it's an option. Otherwise, you're only gonna have the people that can compete that would rip out the additional parking that would be there.
So when you're talking about, like, now, maybe requiring or looking at additional tree islands for parking or all that kind of stuff, that comes into the site plan review. So where does that happen in our code?
Yeah, so the zoning could give all of those recommendations.
Because right now, like, like, CA, like, is this big?
Yeah. And that's where I think we could flesh a lot of that out moving forward to have those requirements. And maybe it's not even, it's just, you know, maybe it's not as simple as this is a requirement for this zone. But, you know, we require either, you know, the, this, this calculation for parking, you know? And if there's additional parking spots rather than ripping up, then maybe just redeveloping some of it into, you know, green space.
Would some of those guidelines come through the comprehensive plan at all?
Well, I think in the short term, the comprehensive plan will lay out high level.
Recommendations, high-level recommendations for zoning changes.
And then when we do adjust the zoning, I think we can bake a lot of that into the actual zoning code. And, you know, we don't even have to say, like, all of these eight things aren't requirements, but we, but all of these things will be considered as part of the zone change and as part of site plan.
As, with the rationale behind them. The reason we want this pavement is for these goals, for these reasons. The reason we want to have more tree islands, but, you know, we've seen, and frankly, I would say, you know, putting in footnotes these best practice things that we've been looking at, and the recommendations we've done from all these speakers and all the stuff we've read and all the things we, you know, so that there's a, it, there's not, oh, this is this group's idea that this is where it came from.
Yeah.
You know?
And then it also applies for variances, too, if they have a good reason for why they don't think that they need this many parking spots.
And I think in the zoning, we can lay out, here, here are the highlights that what we're looking for. They're not hard and fast requirements. But if you're looking for variances, then generally speaking, we're looking for you to recoup this. And I think having it in there, something along the lines of specifically, if, you know, there is this threshold of affordable units that will be built, then, you know, the zone, the town board and the planning board will consider that as, you know, may, and maybe even that's it. We would encourage affordable units. And so maybe if you can't reclaim a bunch of parking lot, you can say, well, we're doing 10% affordable units, and that's kind of the, the give and take.
Right, or even if you're just saying, well, these units are primarily gonna be one-bedroom units for senior citizens who are going to only have water, one car or two cars, and not a family of five people living in here. We don't need that.
Just back to RM for a second, too, because of that 35% lot coverage, but I did want to highlight the fact that we did, um, the dentist office that was built, that's RM, right?
Yeah. Is it?
Yeah. That one's still RM, and I think that they planned for potentially something with the zoning board to.
I know the.
They had, good for their parking in the front, they need permission.
That's right. So that, so like, so that's an example of RM that didn't, even though there's constraints, they still worked with our boards to make their project.
And they wanted it that way, so I guess they'd have the vista and the view in the back for people that were physically in, you know, the business.
Potentially, the 35% might be okay.
So I think, so in terms of recommendations from this group, the first one is in section F, is that it'd be two spaces per apartment, not per bedroom. So we would.
Yeah, I think so.
So we, we, we're not making this decision now, but these are going to be the suggestions. What are we, the other changes that you had in?
Um, well, so more bigger changes or whatever, but we have RM and we have RT, they're exactly the same. The only difference is RT allows, um, let's see, they allow food, shoe repair shops, barber shops, beauty salons and similar uses with a special permit. So if we allow RM to do that.
With special permit.
With special permit, we can get rid of RT, because we don't, it's exactly the same as far as I.
Do you know?
And that was the recommendation of the planning process group. So I am not sure why RT is still showing up.
Do we have any RT, do we know?
Yes, there's one lot in mail, next door to you.
Interesting.
Next door, Russ.
Next door. And it's the only, and it's, there was a particular reason why that happened, which is what the planning board doesn't like us to do. So getting rid of RT is a good idea.
Oh, yeah, it's.
There's not many.
And it's in the zoning map even, too. It's, it's a very unique color compared to the rest of the zoning code. That is really interesting.
So with special use permit, we'll, so we'll add that to the RM, and then we will remove RT from the.
So where the special use permits are, do they get transferred over without review to?
Well, I think.
There is no, in that particular RT place, they never built the business they were going to, so it's nothing.
Yeah, so it, it's, it's, it looks like it's about four parcels, right along 173 there, just as you get outside of the village. Um, and they're split by two RA parcels, right between them, so.
It's very strange, yeah, so.
Well, if we get rid of RT, do we then, do those zones change, or do we just kind of grandfather them into?
No, they would go, they, they would become RM.
All right, okay, so we'll have to discuss if there's any implications, which hopefully, the goal is to make it to his heart.
And so that would be number C in the, in the regulation, you would change it to be, to, instead of saying we're not permitted, we'd say it is permitted with a special.
That's a great idea.
And then the other question is, do we think that they, those businesses still need a permit in, in RM? Because, um, in some of the, the uses right now, it specifically states that you can teach music, but only limited to five pupils, like, is that?
That doesn't make sense if somebody does it virtually.
That, so it's like, does that ease them all, like?
But then, I would think it's a office space, then, if they're doing it virtually.
I don't know.
So it's like. Then we start to have, we're not gonna zone every person that's working from home.
But, yeah, because you, if you work from home, you're allowed to have a little bit of home.
I, oh, okay, I'm sorry. So, so we're talking about not wanting to have too many instruments there? I think because we have a sound.
Okay, sound.
I think because we have a sound ordinance, we don't have to worry about that. And that seems kind of outdated.
Well, I almost think, like, you look at the, so here, I'll actually share this again, so everybody can see the allowed uses in RM. You know, you do, I think you do look at this, and it does call into question, is this a current up-to-date list of?
Right.
Of what you would expect?
I know, I have to go with that.
There we go. So.
So in terms of the, the specific lot we're looking at, pretty much everybody's in the, sort of, the B group there.
Yep.
So that would be permitted by the change, so we're not, we're not screwing up.
Yeah, it calls out a lot of very specific things. And then it also bars very specific things, which almost, like, I look at that and I don't know how many shoe repair shops are about to pop up, barber shops, beauty salons. I feel like those make sense.
Yeah.
For, like, a mixed-use type of transitionary district. But I think maybe what we do is we'll have to sit down with this, let's look at what newer zoning codes are using for this list.
Yeah, and I think that's the, those are like individual careers. There's, there should be a category of retail.
And we just did that with our commercial.
Yeah, why in the world do we have to get? And how many dressmakers? I mean, this seems really outdated.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's interesting.
So I think, um. We could have a recommendation. Yeah, modernization of the code in, in terms of categories of work. Well, and we did come up with categories for the, for the commercials, so we, we should be able to utilize the same words so that we're not.
Is that in the current commercial zoning?
It's in that, that Excel spreadsheet.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
So we could, we could recommend a modernization of this code.
Well, what I think would make sense in the short term is we modify RM, because CA is pretty broad at this point, CB is pretty broad. And if we modify RM and then we can kind of say, if this works, we now know that these categories are actually great to use in the new zoning code.
Cause I mean, that is our most used code.
Yeah.
And then the area that I think is. In, in section D is going down to the setback requirements. If you were building, you know, from scratch, maybe this would work, but this particular property. You know, has the setbacks it has, so.
It sounded like they wouldn't.
It's, so I think it's, it's something where we could come back with a recommendation to the planning board saying. You know, we're not gonna change these regulations, but we, we don't believe that this site. Needs to be fidelity to this, you know, cause it's a beautiful site the way it is. Can I suggest that we also talk about the use or registration of chemicals or pesticides? Um, related to whatever the best practices are. Um, for, you know, for a sustainability standpoint, like I think that. It, and, and we can think about the, there's a difference between the kind of salt, for example, that people use. That is, you know, the chemical base that is harmful to, to animals and, and to the water versus whatnot, so I think we should look at that. Um, because if we can start making a change on this and then, you know, grandfather it in over time, I think it would just be better for the water supply.
That's not that sold in stores, that's.
No, I mean, I am, I am an advocate for getting all pesticides that have been proven to be cancer causing. Out of our, not, out of the, out of the town, um, in water supply that we shared, like we're talking.
Some things are sold in stores that we prohibit in zoning like marijuana.
Do you have an example of, I don't think that's a zoning thing.
Cause if we could find an example, cause it sounds like something.
There are plenty of communities that have, um, have like banned like chemical lawn treatments. There are some that are still approved and some that are not. It's basically the threshold for, it's around water quality. And, and that's what I would use as the guide, the idea of what basically reduces pollinators, what. Um, we know, you know, all that jazz. So, for example, there was a time, this is years ago where there was a. You know, big industrial users of fertilizers need to register what they're using, so they have a sense of how much is actually going into the system, but there was a big gap between. Industrial versus smaller farms. And so I'd also jump back and say like, communities, you know, um. In neighborhoods could be tons of people using it. The fact is, your neighbor using it is affecting your. Uh, if you're, if you have a well, your water supply. So.
I wonder if that's like a, like a water protection kind of.
But maybe, but I also think if we're not gonna go that far, maybe policy wise, we're not sure where we wanna go on this and we can't do a big broad sweeping thing. I think to be able to get more data and understand through like, you know, you have to get a permit to use X, Y and Z versus an acreage or whatever it is.
Well, like even, we, we, you know, kind of. Didn't officially recognize no mo may at first. We, we ended up, we had, I mean, it was a little touch and go this year. The plan is to fully recognize it for next year, so I think in this instance. Maybe what the, in the short term, what we do is we start getting the information to people to say, hey. Start having a conversation with your neighbors, are they using this type of?
Yeah, it could be also like, hey, our neighborhood is going to, and our homeowners association is gonna go. Pesticide free or whatever it is. I don't think we have to dictate it, I'm just saying if we're thinking about it broadly and it has an impact, we should.
In terms of our discretion. What, what are you hoping for us to cover, like?
Well, that's, I think we've got a pretty good set, cause the short term goal is to make sure that the Seven Pines development has a zone that fits their use, because that is. What their planning is, is in line with, I think, what the community has been asking for and what the general trend is. I think we have a good, the planning board gave us a recommendation to go to RM. I think if we make the, some small adjustments to it, that will make a lot of sense.
So I think what we'll need to do is. We'll go back, um, with our attorneys to rewrite this. We'll have a draft for the next meeting. We went and set a public hearing at the next meeting, so then the public hearing will be two weeks after that. Um, and then we could, uh, we could approve the revised RM code and then grant. Grant the Seven Pines property.
Yeah, I don't think we need to wait because we got the recommendation from.
So I think we could give them the zone change, and then by the time that they're deep into site plan review, we'll have amended the.
So I guess we should just let them know that if, that they're getting something that they don't know what it is yet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cause when we make the changes too, we'll let the planning board know.
One of the good too, because we will have the code prepared. Uh, do we, did we schedule that public hearing after Seven Pines?
No, we just got the positive recommendation back.
Yeah, so we haven't, so that's actually good. So what we'll do is we'll schedule that public hearing. We'll have the draft code available, so we can have that conversation during the public hearing and let everybody know what's going on. And then also talk to the applicants, although I do need to reach out to the applicants to make sure that they're, they're.
Zone change. Is a local law, and I believe that the public hearing cannot be scheduled until you have the draft local law on your desk.
Yeah, but we could do the Seven Pines public hearing, cause.
I think the Seven Pines public hearing is a local law.
I think, I think we actually have to have the law done before. We can't, we can't approve them for something that doesn't exist.
And the, so the resolution that's been early prepares for a set date for a public hearing. Um, for zone changes because it's a local law. I think you actually have to have that in front of you to even set the date for the public hearing on that. But. In between the meetings, I'll look that up and make sure, so we know.
And that'll mean it would be a one meeting delay. Yeah, so I think we can tell the applicant that, you know, sort of, they would be wrapped up in September, but it's not gonna happen now.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Once you do the RM thing, we have to then send it back to the planning board for review on the new.
I don't think so, I think that they, we'll talk to them to.
Yeah, I think once we have a draft, we can reach out to them and, you know, remember my members, see if they have suggestions, but we can probably move forward with that. But I think, so Sarah, it sounds like you've got a good list of notes of what we're going to be adjusting.
So I think Elaine and I will work on a draft.
Modification to RM, so here.
RT going away, RM getting modified?
Yeah.
Okay.
So then I just wanna bring up the proposed overlay district, just so we can kind of walk through it. And just see if there's anything in there that we think is important to include into RM now. Um, so, let me see. So we have the purpose, maybe we repurpose some of this to say the adjustments made to RM. You know.
That doesn't have to be in the law.
So then applicability. Um, so this is not relevant, cause we're not doing an overlay district anymore. General overview. Um, do we want to include more language about green space and parking lots, sidewalks if possible? Walkability through the whole plot?
I absolutely feel like that's what we should be doing and having requirements for. Bikes to be able to be stored, electric vehicle charging stations, trails, and we've talked about all of these things, but. It seems to me that that's all coming out of the comprehensive plan, isn't it? Like we're not, we can't, I don't think we can overhaul this zone. To meet what will, what, what we're aiming to do. Yeah, so I think we need to fix the problems that we have. And then keep in mind that we're going to have to revisit this zone again in a pretty short amount of time.
But can I suggest that if we are, if this is housing and this is new house. Housing, and we know the tipping point is coming for electric charging soon, maybe we can say. Based on the demographics or whatever the changes are, we have some sense of what percentage of increase we need and to say, we. Um, and in our, in the comprehensive plan, I guess, say, we want new. New developments, and frankly, you even need them in businesses too. You need to have bike storage or bike, a place for bikes and you need to have electric charging. That businesses of over a certain size and in new housing.
I mean, so many EVs are coming and they're gonna end up with, it's a lot easier to build it from the beginning. Especially if you're tearing up parking lot.
I think, and that's exactly where it comes down to, it's, is it redevelopment versus a new building? I think for new buildings, it's a lot easier to say, after X number of parking spots or, you know, whatever it is.
Percentage you have to.
Yeah, yeah.
So at what point are we, if like a, uh. Rehab is happening in a properties or they wanna modify, do a modification in a building, what percentage are these stuffs gonna be the tip?
And I think that's a, I think we need to look at what the city of Syracuse has done to say. What is minor modifications versus, you know, remodeling and, and rebuilding? Um, cause that's gonna be, that's gonna be tricky, and I think it's important too, that we should probably set.
A grandfather.
Maybe, yeah, but like also like maybe a maximum to say if it's more than fifty percent redevelopment. It hits that, but then leave some room for the, for the planning board, cause I think that'll depend.
Like ADA compliance, you can do it, or you can look at ADA compliance, it's been terrible though, so we want like a higher standard for, for ADA.
So yeah, I think, and that'll. I would imagine a lot of those things will have to come through the overhaul, but we can be mindful of it when we, as we're walking through the.
There's also a business case, is that if those customers run charging stations, people.
And then for, if it's a big modification or a small one too, I think too, it's if it's called interior versus exterior.
Yeah, I think it's a big difference, yeah. That's interesting, okay, so.
Do we wanna reach out to any of our colleagues in the city to find out what they did and like?
Yeah, I think that, would you be willing to?
I can, I can.
Make some calls.
I think that's ongoing too.
Yeah, but they did pass it, and I went to like a whole presentation about it and it was definitely. So it's probably was twenty eighteen.
They called it like.
But I remember this whole, I mean.
Y'all knew what the name of it was.
That is actually a sign of a good marketing campaign.
But I think too, the electric charging and stuff like that is a good. I think in the short term, you would put it in the list of these are the things we wanna see, and it's more so they get to pick the ones that are gonna work for them. And understanding if you're building a bunch of rental units, right now, it might not make sense for you to put in charging stations, but who knows?
Definitely makes sense for now. I don't know, because like, we. We can't just, this is kind of philosophical, but do we wanna rely on like the free market to dictate whether they choose to put in charging?
Well, I think if you put it in there as a nice to have or something we are recommending. Just like green space, sidewalks, you know, walkways throughout, you know, consistent, uh, architectural theme. Uh, you know, built to the street. I think if you put a lot of that in there, some developers might look at it and go, well, one of the cheapest things we can do to meet these requirements is to put in a charging station.
So they have to do at least three of the five or something? I mean, I think what we're getting in this conversation is leaving zoning and going into the design guideline. And I think if we, if the, out of the comprehensive plan, we develop design guidelines, that these are the things that, that we would like to see. But not every site is gonna be able to accommodate every possible variable, and then that's what guides the planning board.
But the one thing that I would be concerned about is making sure we're prioritizing pedestrians, because if we have a list and they just pick the simplest one. Their pedestrians potentially are still gonna get left behind, and like you don't need to buy anything to be a pedestrian.
I think too, it's important that the, the zoning would work for if you're building next to town center. Or you're building somewhere else that isn't already connected, like in the short term, it might be a sense to, to more prioritize. You know, parking in the back, green spacing of parking lot, and to say, you know, if you're not gonna put in. You know, ideally, you're gonna put in a sidewalk, but maybe you don't put some of those things in. Because you're currently on an island where you can then build out from there, and then the next development would be, okay, now you're supposed to connect.
The unfortunate part though is, and I'll use that excuse, oh, well, we're not here, and so then the infrastructure just doesn't get built.
Yeah, I, I think that. Like, we don't wanna make somebody build a sidewalk to nowhere for thousands of miles, just so.
And we're like looking into it as a district too, so.
Like you gotta start somewhere, and it's better, like with a.
That if you look for the muddy trail, you will find out where a sidewalk needs to be. If no one is walking there, you don't need a sidewalk there.
Well, we, no, that's not true, because, because we also, it's a safety issue, like, you know, it's not just like wherever the vanguards. Told us where they should go. Sometimes we get the idea to walk somewhere because the path is in front of us, there's a hiking trail, there's whatever.
Well, that's what I think saying, like having a, like if you're gonna build a, a mixed use development. Then yeah, a sidewalk in front is important. It might only cover the, you know, the four shops that are there. And then it would wrap around the building to go into the parking lot, but that's a good first step.
Even just putting, like, making sure that people can walk around your parking area. Then the town potentially, hopefully, will eventually be able to do sidewalks.
Well, and there are levels, like we always think sidewalk, sidewalk, but there's a difference between like, if there was a safer. Painted, you know, neon green bike path or a walking path from the Y down to. Town center along where the, you know what I mean, like that would be a different scenario and be a little bit safer, and that way me as a parent is telling my kid. Walk from there to there on the path or on the, on the, you know, the pedestrian walk, even if it's on a sidewalk, I feel better about it, and I think. These levels of connectivity, so, so. Sarah's saying, we don't wanna make them build a sidewalk to nowhere, I hear, and. Not making the, the baseline level of expectation high enough for pedestrians when you first start something is. What I hear too, so it's about where you are and where it connects to the infrastructure, and I think that general idea of us thinking about. In the design guidelines. Have you articulated not just your water infrastructure, we've talked about this before, not just your water infrastructure. And your stormwater management and your electricity, but like your pedestrian infrastructure, so it's seen that way. And that way, you know, the, whether it's reasonable or not, how much of a lift it is, is something that's clear.
But it's also perfectly reasonable, cause right now we have parking requirements, and so pedestrian. Biking requirement, I think that's great. So, we've got, I think, a lot of good information, we've got the conversation to refer back to. Um, we've got, it looks like about ten minutes left, so I just wanted to walk through the ARPA proposals that we had put together. So for anyone watching from home, uh. This is, we've been, uh, doing some ARPA spending with the police radios, for example. This is in no particular order, this is some of the, uh, optional things that were, we've been kind of talking about. This is a very, very early draft of this, uh, it's mostly just so that we can start collecting our thoughts as we go into budget season. Uh, and this is more of a planning document for us, uh, as we move forward, and, uh, once this is further fleshed out.
Give me a figure again, please.
Love a lot of faith in us, John, to be able to see.
Sorry. How's that?
Thank you.
So this is also, uh. Many of these will end up in our Civic Plus, uh, platform for people to look at, well. As we have more information, we'll be releasing that, and we will be asking people to weigh in on which of these things they like the most, which ones don't they like, what should be prioritized, you know? What, you know, what should be, you know, let's say, I think right now we're under the total ARPA amount. But let's say at the end of this, we end up with more than the ARPA amount, then we can ask people. You know, is this something that you would wanna prioritize outside of ARPA if it doesn't make the cut for ARPA funding, so. Yeah, I'll just walk through it real quick. So Sarah, this is, uh, one that you proposed engineering costs for the joint Sky Ridge Water District. Um, and so this is an area that, you know, this has been a tough one, you know, we have folks. That are in a water district that are, you know, up against a, a, a pretty big, uh, between a rock and a hard place, really. And we're looking for as much as we can, uh, I know Sarah, we've, we've applied for what was it, water quality. So it's a proposal to, to put some money aside for some engineering costs that'll help that district, uh, carry some of that burden. Uh, this is one that we've discussed pretty intensely, uh, comprehensive, uh, stormwater analysis. Proposed amounts are very loose on this document here, uh, but basically. You know, we've seen that drainage is one of the biggest problems, um, we've tossed around the idea of doing something with the current. You know, we've seen that drainage is one of the biggest problems, um, we've tossed around the idea of doing something with the current drainage districts, understanding that. Uh, they're, they've kind of just grown naturally over time, but we do see that a lot of the drainage work we're doing is outside of those districts. This would really, the, the, the analysis would give us a plan for one, how to deal with the current drainage districts. If there's a, a future solution moving forward, but also give us an opportunity to look at townwide stormwater issues. And come up with a long-term plan, rather than now where we have three districts. And we're kind of hyper-focused on the district every time we talk about that, and we never really take into consideration, you know.
And the water doesn't care.
So this is for our GIS software and technology upgrades, so this is the. Programs that are used by our assessment department, our planning and development department, uh, this allows us to track a bunch of different things about each of the different properties. Uh, but in particular, there are some pretty great new solutions out there, um, at least two that we've, we're currently looking at. Uh, but, uh, a lot of what this brings value to is one, getting everybody in the same system, and then also being able to expand this software, so right now, our highway department. Doesn't have easy access to what we do, uh, and they've got a lot of good GIS information that needs to be uploaded. So a new platform would make it a lot easier to roll people in, cuz it would give us a lot more like permissioning things of like, you have access to this data versus this data. You can edit this, you can view this, uh, and then in the long term, a lot of these, uh, solutions offer. Uh, useful features for like our, our, uh, town clerk's office or the tax assessor or the, uh, tax collection office. Uh, as well as public-facing utilities, so this is, uh, you know, from a, from an ARPA standpoint, this would be a really good. Uh, resilience.
This would also, it's a reason, it will also help developers and others that are interested in. In buying property here to sort of scope out a lot of the details without having to come to town hall and spend a lot of time with people.
Yeah, so it's kind of a spiritual successor to the zoning law in a lot of ways.
Oh, elegantly said.
So then Heather, uh, do you wanna?
Sure, well, the tree map actually would work exactly with the GIS software we discussed, and, um. This is directly, um, related to sort of our general maintenance that we have to do as a community, but also our goals around carbon reduction. And planning, um, for the budgetary process for trees and knowing that trees also help with stormwater management. Um, with quality of life, all the things that we discussed and with our, with our speakers too about what trees bring to us, so. Um, there's wonderful, um, grant opportunities for us to, to have if we are willing to get the data to work.
Yeah, we knew more, we could apply for more grants.
Exactly.
Okay. Uh, so this is something that we've been talking about for a while, uh, bringing a comptroller on board. Uh, we discussed, uh, office space was one of the biggest concerns, um, but this is something that, um. Would give us, uh, a little bit more oversight, this would replace the accountant that we have, uh, that does our monthly and, you know, yearly reports. This would be something that would be full-time here in the office, that would be able to assist all the department heads, uh, and help take, uh, and help reduce. Uh, some of the complexity of the town manager and deputy town manager's roles to kind of start pulling some of those responsibilities out into another role. Uh, and given, uh, the fact that we are aggressively looking at grant opportunities, we have all this ARPA money. Uh, this is a pretty good time to look at hiring a comptroller. Uh, so another one, this is kind of something that's been evolving, uh, you know, looking at having something for a planner. Or a co- uh, comprehensive plan facilitator, a grant writer, and a sustainability coordinator. Uh, there is a number of different options here, uh, something that we wanna look at when it comes to. You know, would this be something we do through a larger firm? Is this a smaller contractor who can meet a lot of these needs? Uh, and also too, looking forward to the engineering RFP that'll be coming up next year. Is that something that just gets included in that, or do we bring someone on in the short term to then, you know, more inform our bid out, so this is. Um, and in a lot of ways too, I think this is, this, this role or these roles are looking at adding bandwidth. Uh, to all the ideas that are coming out and making sure we have somebody who can follow these projects. And really steward them without putting more stress on, you know, the current town hall.
And Manly has used to have a.
Yes, we used to have a planner on staff.
Oh, did we?
Yeah.
That's one of those things that like, it just stopped budgeting for it and it just kind of disappeared.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So then, uh, this is the new building site work and old building feasibility study. Uh, this is looking at the potential site over on the theater property, uh, for a new town hall. Uh, this would be, uh, the money that would help us do the survey work, the geological work. Um, all that stuff, but also looking at, you're doing more of a cost benefit analysis of what would, what would it take? To keep this building open for thirty years, you know, what are the costs that we would, you know, accrue over that time? And just making sure that we've got all the facts out there for the residents before we start having these bigger conversations about in the building.
Would also kind of look at like what are, what our needs are as well.
Yeah, exactly, cuz that's, and like, um, I know in the finance committee meetings, we've been having these conversations a lot about what the needs of the departments are. So I'm planning on talking to department heads about, you know, in the next ten years, what are your staffing needs? Do you see it growing? Do you see it being stable? That type of thing.
For them too, like what the community needs are as well.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, uh, this will also.
I think this might be a little early, I don't know that this is actually like the community survey stuff.
Yeah, cuz we, we have a lot of that feedback through the comprehensive plan, but the, the general idea would be the community engagement piece. Would be a much larger, it would essentially take the better part of a year.
Yeah, so let me ask you this, um, the information or long-term plan, we've included the villages. On comprehensive plans and anything that you've got going on, counties in the comprehensive plan view, but. The fire departments and the school districts. Have we accounted for them inside, and if not, is this, I mean, I think that the demographics and the things that go into the feasibility study. For something like this need to account for those other institutions.
Facilities are there and.
Yeah, like the school district is, has a huge plan based on demographics and the fact that they had to. Make adjustments for the pre-K, um, changes and all that, so. And the fire departments are, have, have had to deal with the craziness around, um, emergency services with COVID and everything, and so. Yeah, those, those, I don't think we've included them well enough.
Okay, in the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, and just, my question is, should we include them in our, and make sure those bits are in the comprehensive plan or linked to. And considered within the comprehensive plan final draft, or? Do we have to worry about that and actually have, um, just make a note that the other institutions that are doing long-term planning in the community? And frankly, that we could collaborate with, like, when it comes to the senior centers, when people that are worried about the public too, is what I'm saying.
And, and that might be just a future step for the comprehensive plan, it is.
Well, I think.
That'd be like next.
It's a land use plan, it's not a human use plan.
But this is.
This is a human use.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
But it's not the same plan, it's a different plan.
Right, so in that case, forget comprehensive plan, I think that all the other institutions that work with the public and need to serve the public. Need to be somehow referred to or as a resource.
And we've, we've started having those conversations with the fire departments, the police department, and I don't know if we brought the schools in yet, but it's definitely a good idea.
Cuz it's space-wise, I'm thinking, is really the issue.
Yeah, well, especially cuz when we do have like the large meeting, we don't always need a giant building, we can use the school building.
Yeah.
And we know that Kirkville has that building that they're dealing with and, you know, to me and.
So I think that's the kind of thing where collaborate, I would call it opportunities for collaboration, is if we need. If we need a room for a hundred people once a year.
Yep.
Yeah.
Do we need to build a room for a hundred people, or do we make a deal with the school and let, and use the school gym?
Right, event and space planning from a, with a community, shared community mindset, yeah.
Okay, so next up, uh, so I know, uh, Elaine, this has been one of the things we've been talking about, the neighborhood sidewalk program. And the goal here really is, you know, we, generally speaking, get a request once or twice a year, and, you know, in a meeting. And then usually, I think we all hear about how much everybody wants sidewalks in our day-to-day pretty frequently.
Saying, there's no sidewalks.
So then, this is an opportunity, and I know Elaine's working really hard on this, to basically make it so that. There is a path to a sidewalk, rather than saying, well, get all your neighbors to agree to it. This would be, we would actually put together a program that has a multi-step process, if you meet these, uh, you know, if you meet these requirements, you meet these guidelines. Get enough signatures, all those types of things, there would be money set aside to fund the MAP plan report. That is the first step in forming a sidewalk district.
Yeah, this would be like a pilot of, to see if the program works and how, like, and how much will it cost, and all that stuff.
I think, and I think one of the prime examples would probably be Enders Road here, cuz that's, that's one that's been talked about for a long time, and if this program was successful.
Right, then we would, then we have a demonstration to show it could work.
Yeah, and we. The plan is to try and see if we can do on it.
Yeah, and then like ideally too, we put a, a program together, we would have an informational session that people could come, they could ask questions. And the idea would be, you know, this is a process of, you know, we don't want you to say, go pay an engineer a bunch of money to come up with a MAP plan report. And then we go to your petitions and only twenty percent of them sign it out, the requirements will be, go get signature petitions from this amount of people.
Yeah, the very first step is to, to, uh, send stuff to the, the street owners, the property owners. To get a temperature of where they are, because that's, it's gonna be on their road, um, so that would be the very first step.
So this is something that we've, uh, had a conversation about too, traffic coming equipment, um, especially as the school year starts back up, I'm sure we're gonna be getting a lot of requests for. Uh, whether it's increased patrols or speeding signs, uh, so I know Elaine's identified a number of different options, uh, some as simple as a. Uh, speed limit sign that has flashing lights that if you're speeding, it starts to flash. Um, and we do know that this is one of the most effective ways to calm traffic, I mean, ideally, we're building streets that aren't straight, you know, straight cut throughs. But this is the very short-term solution, again, I think this really would serve as a pilot to say. You know, we could buy some equipment, try it out in one or two neighborhoods, and if it works, then we have a solution, either. They only need the temporary solutions every once in a while to break the habit.
Cycle them.
Yeah.
Or, we do have some, right, that where this is more.
Well, right now we have the ones that we, the police.
Yeah.
And these are just very small, like, sign ones, and I've seen them in different communities, and the ones that I have listed here. Um, actually, you can program them to, so like if you're not speeding, it actually says thank you, or you can program what the.
Their friends.
Are, so then, um, and it's got the colors.
Yeah, I've seen him with a smiley face.
Yeah, and so you can communicate to residents that way.
That's great. Thank you.
And then we have, uh, the newsletter conversation, that's something that's come up frequently, so basically laid it out as two possible proposals. One to do a more, uh, higher production quality, um. Mailing once a year versus, uh, you know, more of a, you know, a thinner paper, maybe less color mailing, um. Uh, four times a year or, or less, uh, but this is just to make sure that we're putting aside some money to facilitate the newsletter. Actually going out, and this is, you know, we might try it for a year, we might fund the full year, you know, four mailings once. And then we might find out that no one's reading it, and so we cut back, or, you know, make it some kind of opt-in service or something, so this is just an opportunity to see if we can. Get something off the ground, so just a combos program, we don't have really much information in there yet, um, but.
Oh, I only put in, um, a, yeah, the, the one that I proposed earlier was, uh, basically to build a corpus of, of people who. Were supported in their interest in composting to help us understanding a data around it, so.
Yeah.
Right now, Oprah will, um, give you a, uh, you know, they charge you like twenty-five dollars a year or whatever to get a pass. So it's about building up maybe a group of people, neighbor will take everybody's or whatever, but basically. Providing those passes and that, making it easier for a group of residents, uh, to do it, or also to, um. Provide, um, a way to work with the, the business like the. Uh, the one in Skin Atlas that has started, but the other missing piece here is to do, um, a touring visit to Parenton. Um, which has their own local, um, composting program going to see how it's worked for them.
I know there's interest with, uh, some of the village mayors.
Yeah, on top of that.
Cuz that might be in it, we might even say, okay, great, we're gonna help, we're gonna work with the villages to, to help support a composting program there. And then as that becomes viable, then look at expanding it.
And again, allow us to apply for or lobby our, um, other electives or county officials or, or state officials for more support. So the number that I put in originally was between fifteen and twenty thousand, um, but.
So let's put twenty grand in.
Yeah, let's put twenty.
I think there's also from the DEC, there might be like grants and stuff too.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, it shouldn't be, we don't wanna, and for other things in here too, um, the quick check should be. Like, we were checking to make sure who has GIS equipment that we could use, there are a couple of questions we investigated, same thing for the mailings, like. Let's make sure we looked at some research around, let's, let's make sure we're using best practices. And getting some good information so that our choices are informed by.
So then in here, yeah, I was just gonna kind of power through these. So accessibility upgrades at town hall, we know that, uh, town hall needs, uh, some serious accessibility upgrades. Uh, the, I mean, the, uh, obvious one is an elevator, right now, we don't have an elevator in the building. Um, and this would be informed by a feasibility study, um. You know, to see if we're staying here long-term, does that make sense? Even if we're not selling here long-term and selling it, is it, is it something that makes sense to just make this a more viable? Building that someone else might buy, and also for the meantime, even if we're building a building that's years out, and, you know, do we just make that upgrade as needed now? Uh, so this is current town hall improvements, again, informed by that feasibility study, uh, we've got a, a number of different needs here. Um, as with any view of building that's getting up there in age, uh, one in particular is a, a door security system, so rather than having the hard keys, having. Um, you know, scanners and stuff, where you'd scan an ID badge or something like that. Uh, this is the one that we've already done, this is the police radios, uh, that we authorized earlier, this is the phone system we've previously authorized. I gotta fix the description here. Um, which I will say, uh, the new phone system is working out very well, uh, we've got employees who can now work from home without even missing a beat, they're still. Plugged in to, uh, the phone system, and it's working really well, uh. This is, uh, for the highway department, uh, they need a, uh, a computer or a better computer, basically. This is for access for the, for the highway employees who need to access their benefits and things like that.
Yeah.
Uh, new office equipment, so we do have a couple of departments with some real, uh, needs as far as chairs, and then maybe not a new desk, but, uh, the standing desk. Options, I know our assessment department has a standing desk and they get used very frequently, and it's a big improvement, uh, quality of life, and that's it. So just a little, you know, early conversation about exactly what's going on with ARPA. Uh, and like I said, uh, we'll be fleshing those out more and putting them out through, uh, Civic Plus for. Uh, public consumption and, uh, weighing in and, and letting us know how people feel about those things, so. Okay, so with that, we will adjourn the work session, and, uh, the meeting will start in twenty-two minutes.